Good morning.
Good morning.
Welcome to City Council. Today is May 29th, 2024. What we're doing is, I think you want to hear this word a couple of times a day, a do-over. We had a scheduled City Council meeting last week at this time, but we had the emergency out on the streets. We suspended the meeting, and everything that is on the agenda today is a holdover from last week. We're going to begin this meeting as we always do with prayer. Today we have our chaplain. There she is, Ms. Lisa Dennis. All rise.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Got to get close.
I'm going to ask if we would have a moment of silence today as we pause regarding the past events that have occurred in our community involving acts of violence. Thank you. In the words of Mother Barbara Louis McCool, "God, we need your extreme intervention and extreme measures. Dear Heavenly Father, we acknowledge you as sovereign. Heavenly Father, we are going to have peace in our community. It will have to come from within." If there's going to be unity in our community, it's going to have to come from within. If there's going to have right standingness in our community, it has to come within. So let us unite together and pray in the manner which we were taught of old. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come. Thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our debt, as we forgive our trespasses, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil; for thine are the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever. Amen.
Let's remain standing for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Counselors Gibson, President Green.
Present.
Davis.
Present.
Mayor Roots.
Present. Right now, we'll have a time for the public to give public comments on agenda items only. Is there anyone like to come forward? If so, come right to the podium here, speak loudly into the microphone. Seeing none, let's keep it moving. Do I have anyone here that'd like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for April 10th, 24th, and 24th?
Some moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments? Seeing, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Communications, old business. Does anyone have any old business that they'd like to share? All right, Madam Clerk, contract approvals.
I don't have any contracts. Is it contracts in this pack?
Start with Resolution 43.
Oh, you mean it that way. You're saying something different than I'm used to. My apologies.
That's okay.
Resolution: Whereas federal regulations require a written agreement between the City of Chester and the Chester Economic Development Authority regarding the rights and responsibilities of the parties in the execution of the Community Development Block Grant, known as CDBG Program, the Home Investment Partnerships, known as HOME Program, and other related programs. And whereas a cooperation agreement by and between the City of Chester and the Chester Economic Development Authority for the period July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025, has been prepared and is attached hereto, which sets forth the responsibilities and obligations of the parties in accordance with federal regulations. And whereas this matter has been reviewed and considered. Now therefore, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve, number one, that the cooperation agreement by and between the City of Chester and the Chester Economic Development Authority attached hereto is hereby approved. Number two, that Appendix 1 to the cooperation agreement attached and made a part of such agreement reflects the Community Development Block Grant, known as CDBG Program, the CDVG/coronavirus, known as CV, program, HOME Program, and HOME American Rescue Plan, known as ARC, projects previously approved by City Council. Number three, that the mayor and/or his designee is hereby authorized to execute the agreement and to take such steps as may be necessary to implement the intent of this resolution. And number four, that this cooperation agreement supersedes any and all cooperation agreements previously approved.
Can I get a motion?
Some moved.
Second.
Any questions, any comments? All those in favor indicate with an aye.
Wait, we're not doing roll call? Candid?
Roll.
He said all approved. I wait for roll call.
Counselors Gibson. Green.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Mayor Roots.
Yes.
Resolution: Whereas the City of Chester entered into a one-year master services agreement with UHY Consulting, Incorporated, to provide professional services to assist the city with meeting all of the American Rescue Plan Act compliance and reporting guideline requirements beginning in February 2022 and ending March 31, 2023. And whereas, the parties later agreed to extend the original agreement until January 31, 2024. And whereas, on February 14, 2024, Chester City Council approved an addendum to the master service agreement to extend the agreement through April 2027 or until the last reporting period to the Department of Treasury as required by the American Rescue Plan Act. And whereas, it has been determined, in order to comply with ARPA reporting guidelines, there is a need to approve the budgeted amount. Now therefore, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby approve an amendment to the addendum to the master services agreement with UHY Consulting, Incorporated, that said services shall not exceed the budgeted amount of $130,000 for the duration of the ARPA project. Further, it does hereby authorize the mayor to execute the second addendum for and on behalf of the City of Chester.
Some moved.
Second.
Roll.
Counselors Gibson.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Mayor Roots.
Yes.
Resolution: Whereas on April 26, 2023, Chester City Council approved entering into the demolition fund agreement DF-23-60A with Delaware County Council Office of Housing and Community Development for the demolition of the following properties: 427 Rose Street, 429 Rose Street, 2703 Lehman Street, 2705 Lehman Street, and 2709 Lehman Street. Whereas the city determined that said funding should fund six other properties that are imminent danger of collapse. Whereas the Office of Housing and Community Development approved the amended property list on April 3, 2024. Now therefore, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby approve the amended demolition fund agreement DF-23-60A with Delaware County Council Office of Housing and Community Development for the demolition of the following blighted structures located within the City of Chester: property addresses 725, 727, 729, and 731 of Caldwell Street, 2601 and 1722 of West Third Street, 550, 552, 554, and 556 Edgemont Avenue. Further, it does hereby authorize a proper city official to execute all documents necessary for the completion of this project for and on behalf of the city.
Some moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Madam Clerk.
Counselors Gibson.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Mayor Roots.
Yes.
Resolution: The Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby award the contract for the DF-23-60A Delaware County Demolition Program, 2023 Chester City Demolition Contract Number One, as amended dated April 3, 2024, for the City of Chester, for which bids were received on January 12, 2024, to BRB Contractors, Incorporated, at the bid price of $195,751. Further, that all other bids for the above be, and they are hereby rejected. All checks and/or bid bonds accompanying said bids shall be returned to the unsuccessful bidders. Further, the solicitor's office shall prepare a contract, and the successful bidder shall furnish a performance bond in the full amount of the contract in accordance with the specifications and to the satisfaction of City Council.
Some moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Madam Clerk.
Counselors Gibson.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Mayor Roots.
Yes.
Resolution: The Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby ratify the engagement of Kilkenny Law, 117 through 119 North Olive Street, Media PA 19063, as an assistant solicitor for the City of Chester to provide municipal legal counsel and to handle general legal matters effective May 22, 2024, in accordance with the engagement letter dated May 21, 2024. Further, it does authorize the mayor to execute an agreement and agreement with Kilkenny Law for and on behalf of the City of Chester. Further, said agreement is contingent upon the final approval of the city solicitor.
Some moved.
Second.
Any comments, any questions?
I'd just like to make a comment. I know for any of you that was here at the deliberative, I did bring up the issue that in the contract, it was $100,000, but it was budgeted for the city for $93,000. So this new contract does reflect the budgeted amount for the assistant city solicitor, which is $93,959.
Any other questions or comments? Madam Clerk.
Counselors Gibson.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Mayor Roots.
Yes.
Resolution.
Mayor and Council, may I introduce Kilkenny Law, Sean Kilkenny Esquire, and his Kyle Miller, his associate.
Welcome aboard.
Pleased to have you. Thank you and welcome.
Resolution: Whereas the City of Chester entered into an agreement with Constellation New Energy, Incorporated, for the purchase and supply of electricity at the fixed rate of .04227 per kilowatt hour. And whereas, the contract with Constellation is due to expire in December, and the rates are projected to increase. And whereas, due to the city filing bankruptcy, the city's wholesale supplier is offering an indicative blend and extended pricing opportunity. Now therefore, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does authorize entering into the blend and extended option for 18 months with the Chief of Staff or designee to negotiate the best rate between the blend and extended period and lock-in rates up to a maximum of .06572. Further, said agreement is contingent upon final review and approval of the city solicitor. Even further, it does authorize the mayor to execute the necessary documents for and on behalf of the City of Chester.
Some moved.
Second.
Any questions, comments? Madam Clerk.
Counselors Gibson.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Mayor Roots.
Yes.
Resolution: Whereas under Title I of the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974, as amended, the Secretary of the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development is authorized to extend financial assistance to communities in the prevention and elimination of slums or urban blight, carry out activities which will benefit low and moderate income persons, or address other urgent community development needs. And whereas, under the HOME Program created by the National Affordable Housing Act of 1990, as amended, the Secretary of HUD is authorized to extend financial assistance to participating jurisdictions to expand the supply of decent, safe, sanitary, and affordable housing. And whereas, the City of Chester has been notified that the fiscal year 2024 Community Development Block Grant, known as CDBG Program allocation is $1,245,924, and the city also intends to reprogram prior year CDBG funds as follows: 2009 Fires Responders Monument in the amount of $10,000, Crozier Park Trail in the amount of $150,000, 2022 Chester Fine Arts Rehabilitation in the amount of $40,000, unprogrammed in the amount of $37,000, which results in a total amount of $1,482,924 available for eligible projects. And whereas, the City of Chester has been notified that the fiscal year 2024 HOME Program allocation is $337,110, and the city intends to reprogram prior year HOME funds as follows: 2020, 2021, and 2022 Single Family Affordable Housing Initiative, non-site specific, in the amount of $591,671. 2023 Chester Community Improvement Project, known as CCIP, Cheeto set aside, which is non-site specific, in the amount of $61,070. 2021 CCIP Acquisition and/or Rehabilitation and/or Resale in the amount of $115,000, unprogrammed in sales proceeds in the amount of $210,297, which results in a total amount of $1,315,148 available for eligible projects. And whereas, the City of Chester, in collaboration with the Chester Economic Development Authority, prepared a draft annual action plan for fiscal year 2024, which proposes how the entitlement grant funds will be expended to address the housing and community development needs identified in the city's five-year consolidated plan. And whereas, the city held a series of public hearings in connection with the development of the fiscal year 2024 Annual Action Plan, a draft of the fiscal year 2024 Annual Action Plan was on public display from February 1, 2024 through March 5, 2024, and the comments of various agencies, groups, and residents were taken into consideration in preparation of the final document. And whereas, based on comments received, Trinity Transitional Houses Safe Haven Hearts Emergency Crisis Program, an eligible public service activity, has been added to the action plan. Now therefore, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve, Section 1, that the Annual Action Plan for the fiscal year 2024 CDBG and HOME Programs is hereby, in all respects, approved, and the city clerk is hereby directed to file a copy of said actual plan, excuse me, Annual Action Plan for fiscal year 2024 with the official minutes of this meeting of this council. Section 2, that the City Council of the City of Chester is cognizant of the conditions that are imposed in the undertaking and carrying out of the Community Development Block Grant Program and the Home Investment Partnerships Program with federal financial assistance under Title I, including those related to, 1, the relocation of site occupants, number 2, the prohibition of discrimination because of race, color, age, religion, sex, disability, familial status, or national origin, and number 3, other assurances as set forth under the certifications. Section 3, that the mayor of the City of Chester, on behalf of City Council, is authorized to file an application for final, for financial assistance with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for the fiscal year 2024 CDBG Program and HOME Program. And Section 4, that the mayor, on behalf of the City of Chester, Pennsylvania, is authorized to provide assurances and/or certifications as required by the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974, as amended, and any other supplemental or revised data which the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development may request and review of the city's application.
Some move.
Second.
Any comments or questions?
I do. So that was a lot of reading.
She did a great job.
She did. I don't know if Lisa, I don't see her, but maybe the Chief of Staff. So I see in here, there is a total amount of $1,482,924 available for eligible projects. So will there in any time be new housing develop, development being built? I know there's a dire need for new housing in the city, and so I don't know if some of that money can be used for that, or is there any projects in the works that we can look forward to, some new houses being built, and hopefully some homeowners, you know, not just affordable home, homes for rent, but some houses that residents can purchase, and we can be, begin to create more homeowners in the city.
So the answer to your question is, yes, there is. There's a couple of projects that are in the pipeline, but when you're looking at those funds, those are the CDBG dollars that goes towards the housing initiatives, but the HOME dollars is what specifically set for housing development. But there are, CCIP is actually working on a new development right now, and in our planning, there are a couple of conversations right now with some other developers that are looking to bring in some housing as well.
Okay. So the $1,000,000 that's not allocated, do we know what the intentions is for that?
Yes. You'll have a budget. Once we get the final approval from that, you'll get the budget of where that money's broken down to.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Madam Clerk.
Counselors Gibson.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Mayor Roots.
Yes.
Resolution: The Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby grant permission and authorance, excuse me, and authorize the issuance of a road opening permit to PICO for the installation of new natural gas services with the line extended 1,200 feet within the City of Chester that will include the following: number 1, 24 3 feet by 4 feet test holes on 24th Street from Chestnut Street to Upland Street. And number 2, 1 3 feet by 7 feet test hole on Walnut Street near the 24th Street intersection. Further, said permit is contingent upon PICO's compliance with all the conditions outlined by the city engineer and performed in a manner that is satisfactory to City Council, specifically the following: number 1, PICO performs a half mill and overlay on all road openings exceeding 100 feet or 3 patches within 100 feet. Number 2, PICO provides appropriate traffic control measures to ensure continual operation of city streets. And number 3, PICO obtains all required road opening permits from the city as well as any other required permits.
Some moved.
Second.
Any questions?
I have a question. Have, has PICO obtained any other permits from the city? Chief Leitner?
Yes, they have.
And, and the, the last time I know, was mentioned that the residents have been notified when this is going to take place, or PICO was going to be reaching out to them?
That's one of the things we're working on. That's one of the things we're working on, is to make sure that PICO is notifying them, but how they notify them, that's the dilemma we're working on. But last time we spoke at the deliberative, we have reached out to them to find a better way to communicate with the public, to let them know what's happening on that street.
And has that been followed up on?
We don't have a solid answer back yet from PICO on how that's going to work and how we're going to coordinate those efforts.
But we will be following up.
We will, we will be.
So that the residents know.
Yes.
Thank you.
Even if that means for us that we, again, I just don't want to say put it on the website, but we will do that and put it on the TV station, but we really want to try to have PICO be responsible for that, whether it's flyers on the door or what, but we still have to work through that dilemma.
Okay, thank you.
We will follow up.
Any other questions or comments? Madam Clerk.
Counselors Gibson.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Mayor Roots.
Yes.
We have an ordinance for introduction. Do you want her to read the entire ordinance or just the blurb?
No, we don't, we don't read anything on this one. This is one that we put on here just for introduction to move forward to the council for next meeting.
All right, it's Code of Ethics Ordinance that will be introduced in the next council meeting for its first reading.
I'll make a motion that we table this ordinance until further review of all council members as well as the solicitor. We haven't had a chance to really digest this code and really get into the details of it, you know, and before I approve something like this, I really want to make sure that it's the best ethics code possible, because not only will it govern this council, but also administrations to come. And so I really want to do a deep dive in this, and if we can have an executive session with all of the members of council, so that way we can go over this before we introduce this to the committee or to City Council as a whole.
I second that.
Is that a second?
Yes, that's a second.
Any questions or comments? Well, I'll make the comment that.
It's not really a motion. It's not, it's not really a subject matter for vote. It's an announcement, but I understand what you're saying, Council.
We haven't had an opportunity to review it at all, even as an introduction.
Yes. Have you all received it?
Yes.
We have received it, but we have not all sat down as council members together to go over, even in an introduction.
So it is, you've received it about a week ago?
Yes.
You have another week to read it. It's 14 pages.
And so we all need to sit together with it and see what we agree on and what we don't agree on before we even introduce it.
Well, we don't have to sit together. We're giving it to read.
We need to review it.
You, you've had a week to review.
We need to review it still, in my opinion.
It will be introduced on the next council agenda, and it will be up for a first reading, and then in the following council meeting, it will be up for a second reading. So we have nearly a month to make any adjustments, changes, reviews. to make any adjustments, changes, reviews. There's no reason to not introduce this next. Mr. Leitner?
A-again, this is, it's just more so a notification to move forward to the next council meeting. But right now, you're, you're not making a vote to table or to move it. That's where you can have that opportunity at the next council meeting. This is just more so the introduction. Like, like, uh, like the solicitor said, this is, it's not a voting, it's just introduction, that notifying everyone that it's going to go in the next council meeting. That's it.
And what I'm saying is, we, I don't want to introduce this to the committee or the council until all of us had a chance to, um, digest it and sit down as a council to go over this. We have not done that. And so I'm not going to agree to anything until I have a great understanding of what exactly we're introducing and what, you know, we're going to pass as the council. Like I said, this is going to govern this council, uh, and generations to come. And so I want to make sure that I'm making the right decision. And I am not introducing this to council or going to approve it until such time.
You don't have to, I already have. So let's move on. Uh, reports. Budget and Finance Committee?
Good morning, excuse me, good morning, everyone. So the Budget and Finance Committee has moved to table the fee schedule ordinance, um, for all departments for June the 10th, Monday, June the 10th. And that time, we will have presentations from each department, uh, throughout City Hall so that we can come up with a solid, uh, fee schedule for the entire city.
Thank you. Community and Economic Development Committee Chair Gibson Williams.
The committee has not met since the last council meeting, and there are no few, uh, no future meetings scheduled at this time.
Human Resources Administrates and Appointment Committee is chaired by myself. We met on May 20th at noon in the council chambers to discuss zoning hearing board and parking authority board appointments. There's no future meeting scheduled at this time. Parks and Recreation Committee?
Uh, the committee has not met since the last council me, council meeting, and there is no future meeting scheduled at this time.
And Public Safety Committee, which I chair, we met on May 20th at 11:00 a.m. in the council chambers to consider repealing obsolete articles under Part 15 entitled Fire Prevention Code of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Chester. The committee is scheduled to meet on June 10th to continue with the articles under Part 15 at 12:00 noon in council chambers. And Public Works Committee Chair West is not present, so I will read. The committee has not met since last council meeting, and there are no future meetings scheduled. And lastly, Rules Chambers, Intergovernmental Relations and Strategy Committee, which is chaired by myself. We did not meet since the last council meeting, and there's no future meeting scheduled. That's, concludes our committee reports. I just want to remind everybody, the committees, meetings are advertised. You are, as members of the public, welcome to join. They are live streamed and they are, saved on the city website to, to view. Is our controller here today? Do we have a controller report? Do not see our controller. Okay, thank you. Chief of Staff?
I don't have a full report, but I do, uh, I did include into your packet the budget, uh, for April. Just received it last night, so it is in your possession for review. But I wanted to get it into your hands. Like I told you, Councilman, uh, Green, I would have it for you at the end of the month. And so you have it, so you guys can review it. If we do need to discuss it more, we can discuss it more, um, at the next council meeting, if you like. Other than that, I don't have anything else for a report from, uh, Chief of Staff.
All right, thank you.
Chief, has there been, have you guys done a report for all of the, uh, months, starting from January up until now?
Um, so the first monthly report you got was last month, and this is the second report that you got for a monthly. But when you look at that, it does give you January, February's breakdown. If that's what you're, if I'm answering your correct question correctly.
This, okay.
Yeah, it should show January, February, March.
Okay, January, okay. I see it at the top, okay.
And then it gives you the year-to-date.
And, and it's, is the, is this, this is not the expenditure report, though?
The expenditures, there's a second tab on there. So you show, it shows your revenue, it shows your expenditures, and it will show you your key numbers. From January, February, March, April, and of course, the year-to-date.
Thank you. I'll take a deep look at this.
Yeah, I want to give you a, a second thank you. It's a long time coming. Uh, it's the first of this type of report that's been presented to council. And I know we're moving toward doing monthly reconciliations, something that, uh, we haven't had for a long time. Too often, we've been kind of loosely loo, using the term expenditure report. That has only been like a check run, the checks that we've written for the month. This is truly what an expenditure report and a budget to actual, or a budget of actual spending really looks like. So thank you for this.
And I, if I can just say to, to you all in the public, as you all know, we have a new chief, uh, new Chief Financial Officer, Mr. Rich Troutman. Can you raise your hand? So the reason for the delay, uh, again, we just have some internal things we had to work on. Uh, I know you've been asking for that. But we've gotten to a point now, I want to commend, uh, Rich. He's been here about a week now.
Two weeks.
Seventy-two hours, so. But him and the actual staff worked over the holiday to really get this report together. Uh, so I want to commend them and tell them thank you for getting this, because we did say we would get something to you by the end of the month. So I know they were working diligently over Memorial Day and over even yesterday to get this report finalized. There's still some concerns we have in there, but again, I just wanted to get something for you to look at and review. We can adjust it as we go through the process. Uh, but we do want to spend more time with the finance chair, so he can have a better understanding of it as well. And we can make some adjustments to it to see if there's certain things you want. But that's kind of the format we were looking to keep in a format we want to actually, uh, present to you on a monthly basis.
Thank you. And, you know, and I, I appreciate getting this. This is the first one I've seen, um, since I've been in office, so I appreciate this. Um, however, when I get other reports from other boards that I sit on, a lot of it is like a detailed report. And, and it will show the checks that has left City Hall, the checks that is going out. And when, you know, we talk about paying vendors and paying different things. Like, that's what I want to see. I want to see who we're paying and what we're paying them. If that makes sense.
That makes sense.
Let me kick in here. Mr. Receiver, I see you back there. Good morning. Is the receiver site still housing the check runs? I know that has been on your site in the past. Have we been keeping that current?
Yes, check runs, but I'm not sure if it captured everything because of the grid and refer to what wire transfers. If that makes sense, or yes, the check runs are still posted on the quality basis.
Okay. Those were the reports that I was referring to as the expenditure reports of the past.
Well, we can, we can include check runs and we can include all that. That's not an issue.
Thank you.
All right.
All right, that concludes the city business that we came to conduct. It's time for public comment.
Before we get it, I, I do have one more question, um, Chief. And, um, the new CFO, I think he's, yeah, he's been here two weeks or so. And I, I heard a rumor that-
About a week.
About a week?
Yeah.
That you uncovered 94 additional accounts or some additional accounts, and some of them had over a million dollars in it. Am, am I hearing that correct? Or you uncovered some additional accounts that the city owned with money in them?
I, yeah, sorry, I was trying to-
Yes.
Mayor, council members, and the audience, I would suggest that it's more about getting everything, all the different pieces of information encapsulated together as opposed to finding money here or there. It's more about different reports having different information on it. And we're in the process of getting good data so management can make decisions and the public can get their information. That's what this initial effort is about. So we are tightening up controls around the financials. And we're also endeavoring to get the reporting out. And so that which you've asked for is reasonable request. It, it's, as Mr. Leitner spoke to, we wanted to get something meaningful initially. And, and it was felt that the financial statements that you have were the best start.
I'm sorry, maybe you didn't understand my question. Uh, my question was, I heard that in a meeting you mentioned that you've uncovered 94 accounts or some accounts with money in it that the city owns. And one of those accounts had over a million dollars in it. So I'm asking you, have you uncovered new accounts that the city owns?
There, there are no new bank accounts that have been discovered. It's where the things are reported that the city has. They're in different places. So we're consolidating where the things are reported.
Okay.
So there's no, there's not new money, new accounts, anything found? Uh, what Mr. Troutman's saying is that what we've, what he's uncovered is just putting things where they belong. That's what we're, we've been dealing with over the last couple of years, even since the receiver got here. It's just proper accounting. Putting the money, when you talk about the expenditures and, so all of this ties together, even as the mayor was saying. When, in the past, when you were receiving the check run, that's what it was. It was check run. But it wasn't telling you, it just told you where the check was cut. But we, we want to make sure that if it's a supply that is coming from a supply account, if it's, uh, equipment is coming from an equi, equipment account. So what they've done is found that we were paying things out of other accounts that they shouldn't be paid out of. Uh, so it's not new accounts, it's just proper accounting methods that we are starting to put in place. So I hope that answers your question. So it's not new money, not new accounts. It's proper accounting is what we're, is happening.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
All righty. I don't want everybody to be alarmed, we didn't find millions and millions of dollars. It's just, it's just proper accounting methods, all right? That's all.
I see our controller just walked in. You didn't have a report for today, did you?
No, but I get your question about the budget I was sitting on.
All right. We, we call it public comment. On here, it's called, uh, Good and Welfare. So first on our list is Ms. Kearney Warren. You have three minutes. We have the timer today? Nope, looks like it's coming. Hold on, Ms. Warren. There we go.
Okay, good morning, Mayor and Council. Uh, my name is Kearney Warren. I'm sorry, I don't have all of the information about the incident that I learned last night, but my comments are in response if the mayor's action was indeed unwarranted and done in secret, as it sets a horrible and dangerous precedent. I'm here today as a concerned member, community member, to address a serious issue. Mayor Ru, Roots, your decision to authorize a criminal background check for Mr. Dorsey without his knowledge in relation to a simple proclamation is not only disrespectful and discriminatory, but is also a blatant violation of his civil rights. Uh, to subject him to such an invasive and unnecessary process not only undermines his dignity, but also reflects poorly on your understanding of the community you were elected to serve. Chester is a predominantly black city intentionally disinvested in and often marginalized. The arrest and incarceration rates among black men, women, girls, and boys are disproportionately high, a reflection of systemic injustice that we all are too familiar with. To single out Mr. Dorsey in this way perpetuates these injustices and suggests a disturbing lack of empathy and connection with the residents in this city. Mayor Roots, if you don't like us, why did you run for office? Your actions suggest a bigger, more sinister agenda. It's clear you and your campaign manager have difficulty handing, handling opposition or hearing the word no. You campaigned on the slogan, "Chester Deserves Better." Yet, if these actions are true, you are proving otherwise. Instead of being the change we needed, you are continuing to violate our rights with oppressive and racially charged tactics. It is very hypocritical, hypocritical to target Mr. Dorsey when you have associates with records who are serving this community. The people of Chester will not stand for actions like this. You have operated like someone who doesn't like the very people you promised to represent. We see through this and we won't be silenced. When you come for one of us, you come for all of us. Mayor Roots, you messed around and found out that we won't tolerate such blatant disrespect and injustice. Thank you, Councilman Green, for addressing this, um, and working towards a solution so that this never happens again. Um, we stand with you, but we will continue to hold all of our leaders accountable. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you, Ralph Williams.
My name is Ralph Williams, live in Chester, 2506 West 7th Street. Good morning, Mr. Mayor.
Morning.
City Council.
Morning.
And Mr. Dowry. What I'm here for this morning, I was reading about the incident that was going on with Stormwater. I'm glad that we have, uh, City Council and the mayor trying to find out what's going on with that money, because we're getting tired of paying it and not getting answered. The last time I was here up at the podium, they told me to go to one of their meetings. I went before, uh, the meeting started and talked with one of the supervisors down there. And he gave me a brochure. And we went over that, and him and I actually argued for about an hour. But, uh, main reason I'm really here, you know, you guys are trying to get, uh, financial records from them. And I said to myself, I think I did better because they did give me a brochure with some of the lies on there. So, uh, keep up the good work, Mr. Mayor and, uh, Mr. Dowry, because, uh, 90% of the city is with you because what was shoved down our throats over three years ago was, uh, really, uh, not something we could vote on or had any words to say about. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't want to mess up this first name. Ms. Robinson?
Good morning, Council.
Good morning.
I'm here to, um, represent 1037 Morton Avenue. I live on the main street. It's an alley in the back of us. And what make it so bad? People come and park their car coming from Morton Avenue around, going toward Highway Street. They park their cars there. If a fire break out, trucks can't get there. And then what make it so bad? The trash truck comes through there. That girl blew that horn like she was crazy to get somebody to come out and move their car. My son called one Sunday and to see if they could get their car. My neighbor comes home, she comes through the alley. We can't even get in our backyard for groceries. She had to go all the way down 9th Street to come home to park her car. And I think that's, 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 that's not fair. And if you can put some signs to say, "No parking." Thank you.
So this is the 1000 block of Morton Avenue only?
Yes.
Okay, just that block?
Yeah.
People are parking in the back alley?
Right.
And cars can't come in, can't come through because cars are parked in the alley?
Right, as far as at the end of the alley.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry. When you say the end of the alley, it's where people would come in and out of that alley?
They come from Morton Avenue.
Mm-hmm.
And then come past my alley, and it's on the end of Highway Street.
At the end, okay.
Right.
Thank you. Mr. Kotman?
Good morning, Mayor, Council.
Good morning.
Jamil Kotman, 725 Land Street, Chester, Pennsylvania. Um, came here today to let this city know and council know, hopefully, June the 8th, we will be having a Ball Against Violence on 7th Street Basketball Court from 11:00 to 7:00. Um, I'm just asking everybody, council and mayor, hopefully y'all could come out. The community, come on out. It's our second annual Ball Against Violence. It was a big event last year. It's right after the, um, the violence, the violent march that the only, the community has. So please, 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 if y'all are free, please come on out and enjoy yourself. We have a lot of people just coming out, um, all the way from, on Baltimore, that's coming down here with basketball teams. So please, 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 come on out. Thank you.
Mr. Kotman, what was the time again?
Eleven to seven.
Thank you. I do remember that from last year, and it was a good event. Ms. Livia Smith.
Since we're doing public service announcements, excuse me. Just to let you know that on June the fifteenth, the thirteenth Annual Juneteenth Festival, which is a partnership with the City of Chester and Saint Daniels Ray of Hope CDC. It will be held at Memorial Park from noon to six. And the feature act will be the legendary Blue Notes. And other singing acts will be Brian Farr and the Blind Date Band, featuring Tyler Star, Mark's Jazz Band, Nick Reynolds, and Family Affair, which is a gospel group. There are basketball tournaments, voter registration, N D C P registration, food, craft vendors. No swimming this year. Face painting, dance contests, children's activities, and health fair. So come out for a free concert, to enjoy yourselves, and, um, hopefully, you know, the weather will be very good. It's rain or shine. So if it rains, bring your umbrella.
Thank you, and thanks to particularly Saint Daniels Church for keeping that tradition going here in the city. It is always an event that we look forward to. Ms. Nichols.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning.
I won't be before you long, I have two items, uh, that I'd like to bring to the council's attention. One is regarding the resolution for the street work for Pico. Um, I'm not sure who in the Streets Department is responsible for like, street surveys, but there are several sinkholes. There are several sinkholes in that area, um, on Twenty-second, Twenty, and Twenty-Third Street, between Upland and Chestnut, um, very big sinkholes. It looks like they're from like, a pourback field where work had been done before. So I'm just asking that prior to Pico doing that work, if someone can go out and assess. I'm not sure if it's like, a water pipe or a sewer pipe, but something there is sagging. Um, there's probably two on the Twenty-Third Street, um, side where the apartments are. And then there's one big one right in front of the ears, nose, and throat doctor on Twenty-second Street. So I wanted to bring that to council's attention, and then I guess I-
Hold on, between Upland and?
Upland and Chestnut.
Chestnut, okay.
Yeah. And they're, they're occurring on both sides, that's what's making me think it may be an infrastructure issue under, under the roadway. Um, so I wanted to bring that to council's attention. Also wanted to ask for mayor and council assistance regarding issue at the, um, oh, let me stop for a minute and congratulate Sean, congratulations, Sean, welcome to Chester. Um, to ask for mayor and council support on an issue at the Chestnut Ridge Senior Living Complex. I think it's Chestnut Ridge. Um, and that's located in the twenty-seven hundred block of Chestnut Street, um, where they have two sides, they have an independent living side, and then they have assisted living. And currently, they have gotten rid of their third shift, so there's no one there to operate the doors after eight, um, PM. Uh, my pet, my former pastor and overseer lives in that complex. And so when emergency responders come, um, to assist people, they cannot get in the building unless someone can come down and physically let them in. So we were there on last Sunday, and there was an emergency incident on the tenth floor. I know someone passed away there and, um, responders couldn't get to them because there was a door, the door was locked. Um, and we were there last Sunday, thankfully, we were able to let the responders in to, um, assist someone on the tenth floor. But I would ask for mayor and council support along with your EMS to try to get a knock box or something there so that when first responders come, it, you know, these seniors can't always make it downstairs to open the door for them, so that when first responders come, they can gain access and provide the life-saving support that folks are calling nine-one-one to get. So I do ask for, you know, and ask for your support in, um, helping those residents to be able to receive those critical services during the times when there's no one working that front door. Thank you, that's all I have.
Knock, knock box sounds like a easy fix. What time does the?
Eight PM.
Eight PM.
And then they don't come back on shift, I believe, until seven in the morning. And then doors locked, so EMS can not get in the building unless someone physically comes down, so that, um...
Hey, everybody, comment please. Working with other different, um, places for, use like, example, Belvedere, normally what they'll do is, uh, a knock box is always key. I have one on Meadow Lane, but more importantly, they'll normally make us an access key, and we give it to our supervisors, and we'll have one, possibly the fire department have one, and it makes it a lot easier. What we could do is, we could follow up, get in contact, and see if we can have access to the key, because in an emergency situation, you run into a knock box, we have the key, the supervisor does, we can gain entry, but we will follow up for you. I promise you. You're welcome.
Thank you. Kenneth Hunt.
Art Monster. Hello, Mayor and Council. Hello, all your folks. My name is Kenneth Hunt. Um, I'm a lifelong member of Chester, my family, everybody's lifelong members of Chester. Um, when I came to speak to you, I wanted to just say this from the heart. I know all of you guys personally. I know a lot of people in here personally. I think, um, certain situations that happen amongst you guys personally should be handled in a private setting.
Yeah.
There's no disrespect to y'all. Look, I love y'all, I love, I don't, I don't even want to say it for a clap, I love all of y'all. Like, I really, I have personal relationships with all of y'all. And as adults, I think that sometimes we should hand, we should be able to handle stuff away from the world, seeing what's going on. I know all of you guys want better for the city. We've been here fighting for the city. Fred, I seen you fighting since you was a kid. I've seen you fighting since you were a kid. Ms. Tamika, I seen you praying for this city since you were younger, I seen you praying for this city. I've seen you come here and you diligently, you diligently said that you want to change this. In order for us to change it, don't forget you guys are the face of us. So when you guys, whatever you go through, and I'm not saying which is wrong and which is right, that's not for me. I'm just saying that everyone else sees it, you know? So if, just in the future, if some of the conversations could be held in private, if some of the things, 'cause we got a great city. All these people you see behind us, these guys are working together. I've never seen, I've been in the city forty-four years of my life, right? And I've never seen it to the part where the lieutenant knew is cool with the captain. The captain is cool with the fire company. Fire company is cool with the secretaries downstairs. The mayor is cool with the, you know, the business owner over here. And it's like, now that we got all this stuff going together behind closed doors and our crime rate is a little bit lesser, I, I, I just, I would love to see you guys pull together more in the future, that's all. I'm not going to hold up any more of your time, and I love you guys, all right? Let's, let's, let's show them what Chester can do, though. Like, let's show them what Chester can do, unity-wise. Or we're just another, we're just going to be another group of people, right, that argue with each other. All right? I love you all, man.
Mr. Stockman. Take your hat off, please.
Sorry, apologize. Good morning, my name is Joe Stockman, stay at two oh nine East Thirteenth Street. I don't know if you still got it. Um, what I wanted to say was this. Um, I voted for all y'all that's up there. I stood by y'all when y'all campaigned, when y'all was out in the street, when y'all was doing y'all thing. I'm a business owner in this city, I pay exorbitant amount of taxes, shit crazy.
Shut your mouth, Mr. Stock.
But I'm saying that to say, this not what I voted for. This not, this not what I, this not what I stood out in the street with y'all for. This not what I campaigned with y'all for. This not what I wanted representing me. This what I, this what I didn't want standing out in front, I didn't wanted to see, like, what we were seeing the last few years, that every time it was a situation in this room, it became a big argument, it became real public, it became real messy. Know what I'm saying? Kind of like what Kenny said, I, I would, I would like for us to try to address these issues in a private manner. Address these issues without coming in here, and address these issues without involving the public so much. I understand that this thing with, um, Rauf is a, a big thing. He's a friend of mine, I stand by him. I also understand that it's a big issue now, and it's same in the streets politically. But two things can be right at the same time. It can be right that we need to check on people and make sure everything is cool, and it can also be right that we need to respect our leaders and our elders and our people who came before us. Know what I mean? Treat them with dignity and respect. So two things can be done at the same time. People can be treated with respect out here, and these jobs can be done that we find is important. I find that this background thing, this issue, I, I actually commented on that last night because, and that's why I really wanted to speak. I myself, I'm a felon. I've been a felon pretty much my whole life, and it took people to... It took people to give me a shot, it took people to give me an opportunity to open the door. And we can't close the door on brothers. We can't, it's hard enough coming back and trying to be a member of this community, but to have the doors closed on you. See what I'm saying? So that's why I stand with the brother, I stand with him because we gotta look past people past, man. Like, I did a lot out here, man. I did a lot of bad things out here.
Five seconds, sir.
All right, I'll be brief. Did a lot of bad things out here, but I look at myself and I say, this is where I want youngers to be. I want youngers to have, went through a path and he went wrong. I want them to see somebody, have a, a beacon of somebody to say, they can come out on the other side. I think Rauf Dorsey is that, I think myself is that, I think Ken Patako is that. I think it's a lot of brothers out here.
Five seconds, sir.
I appreciate that, know what I'm saying? I'm gonna leave y'all with that, man. I just, I just hope that we can come together more, man. I think, I hope that we can reach back to the brothers that we feel as though aren't capable because they're being barred from these situations and pull them up.
Thank you, Mr. Stockman.
All right.
Ms. Lavender Sam.
Good morning, Mayor, Council, everybody.
Good morning.
I just wanted to say one thing. You're doing good, but you gotta do better. Now here's the thing, with all the situations that we run into, ego projected by fear, protected by anger, does not make for good governance. And I want to say it again. Ego projected by fear, protected by anger, does not make for good governance. But it does have the potential to make for divisive governance. So I want y'all to think about that, that's it.
All right, thank you. Ms. Teresa Good.
Hello, everybody.
Morning.
Hello, everybody.
Morning.
Hi. My name is Teresa Good, Teresa Scott Good. I'm a resident of City of Chester. I've been here all my life, I never left and came back. When the city was weak, I never did that. I've been in my same house for fifty-three years, on the same street. I came from one own home to another own home. I say this to say is, I voted for y'all based on Mr. Roots. He, I've been following for a while. I follow you, I follow you. I don't know this gentleman, but I know his family. My thing is, we have to stop separating. We really do. And everybody has to be accountable for it. I'm saying this because I was really disgusted at the last, uh, board, uh, meeting, because y'all talked about the mayor, he wasn't even here to present himself, to defend himself. I'm one vote, I don't have nobody to speak for me. That lady before there, before came up here, she doesn't speak for me. I speak for myself. I've been doing it all my life. I've been doing this since I was fifteen years old into the politics and stuff. This is nothing new to me, nothing. But I just want y'all to, like the gentleman said, any of that other stuff, y'all keep that stuff behind closed door. I don't want to read about it. I don't want to look at it on Facebook or anything. Because right now, I want to talk about where I live. I have a tractor trailer parked in my area that won't leave, I don't know where it came from, but it's there and it has to go. I need my grass cut up there where we live at. We have other important stuff to worry about. It's not that the, the, what you were saying is not important, but what I'm saying is, some things are, have to be, I asked ironed out behind closed doors. And y'all know me, so y'all know that the way I'm talking is the way I talk all the time. So I don't need nobody to speak for me, but I just need somebody to get the tractor trailer from where I live. And y'all keep all that other personal stuff and egos and all that stuff, keep it behind closed doors. Because we need trash everywhere in the city. Get out your cars and walk. Just walk down Curlin Street. That's the only, just walk down Curlin Street. Or take a shortcut through this alley and see the trash back there. That's what I'm worried about. You know what I'm saying? When you're hiring people, that's between that gentleman and y'all, who, how y'all hire and what y'all do to hire people. But I want to get this trash off the street because I'm embarrassed. Curlin Street is our main street for the, for the ninety-five. They can't get CSX to cut their grass and keep the trash out, the railroad people. So that's my important thing, that's what's important to me. You know what I'm saying? How y'all hire people is, has nothing to do with me. My son is a, a, a felon. He's been struggling all his, since he's been out of prison. So that's nothing new. They all struggle. People don't want to hire him. My son's been struggling, he's been trying to get down to the pipeline for years. He can't because he's a felon. But does that, that doesn't stop him, he just goes to the next one. Thank God for Local Four Thirteen. That's what I thank God for, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Police Commissioner's here, I'm willing to bet the proximity of your home to Crozier Park, that tractor trailer probably came from Crozier Park after we moved the tractor trailers out of there.
Those things that carry cars.
Right, that's exactly where it came from, so can we check that out?
Yeah, and, um...
To the mic, please, to the mic.
Prior to this, uh, if you drive down Curlin Street, and it was right before the Jackie Robinson League opened up, myself, the mayor, Captain Carey went down there, and that area is completely clear. Also, if you go to Flower Street, that was a hot area. That area is clear. Alls you gotta do is get on the police radar, and we will go out and we will take care of it. Um, we subcontract with Rob's Towing, from Delaware County Towing. Normally, it takes about twenty-four hours in advance, but the one thing that we do as a police department, because a lot of these tractor trailers, they're workers. That's how they pay, that's how they feed their families, that's their living. We do try to give them enough time to make contact, but I can tell you this now, we will go down there, try to make contact, and we will have it towed. Uh, everything I hear in the council, I just submit right to my captains, it goes right to their phone. But we will act on it, I promise you that. And what's the exact location of it?
Thirteenth Park, thirteen, ten, thirteen, six hundred block. Where that, uh, 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 movie people, the cast people, they came in and disrupted the whole area. The people that's making the movie, it's, that's, and it's back there, and it's back there, but it's filled with, they're...
So you're telling me Thirteenth and Parker?
Yeah, six hundred block, off of Curlin Street.
Okay. And it's a car carrier?
And a truck, there's some car, and there's a car carrier.
I got it.
Oh, you're staying there?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. We just have one more. Alethea Davis Moses?
Hello, everyone.
Morning.
I don't have too much to say. Um, it's just that, you know, I am concerned with, and what I saw.
Before, before you, it's Alethea, I, I apologize.
That's right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just have a, a little issue of concern with what I did see on Facebook. You know, I really don't care about someone receiving anything, you know, I really don't. What I care about is people being held accountable for what they do to other people. Okay? I feel some type of way. I feel some type of way that this is being talked about, but my child still has not received justice yet. And lies have been told that this would not happen, or they wouldn't be released, or this and that. Lies. And what I feel is corruption. And see, I don't mind saying how I feel, 'cause I don't care. And see, and everyone has told me, has pulled me aside, stop, don't do this, don't say that, be quiet, because if you get in trouble, no one's gonna come to help you. I don't give a flying flip if anyone comes to help me, because I'm gonna help myself. Enough is enough. There's other things that need to be addressed. Okay? Lock the people up who are doing bad to people out here in the city. Clean the streets up. Okay? These things are need to be addressed. I don't care anymore. I don't wanna hear any more lies. I voted for all of you. I was there with you. I voted for everybody that's in front of me. And what I see is hurt. And what I feel is hurt and pain. That's all I got to say.
All right. Thank you. That's everyone who signed up. Is there anyone else that have any public comment? If so, just step to the microphone now. State your name and your address. And say it slowly, because I'm gonna write it.
Okay. First name is Bernetta, B-E-R-N-E-T-T-A. My last name is Wright, W-R-I-G-H-T.
Address.
I reside in the six hundred block of East Twenty-third Street, here in the City of Chester, PA.
Thank you.
I would just like to piggyback off of most of the comments that have already been made here this morning. I don't have a dog in the fight about a proclamation, but I do have a dog in the fight because I'm a taxpayer and a voter, a proud voter, who has voted since I was eighteen years old and had the right to vote. I will continue to do so. All this other personal nonsense that's going on on Facebook, it needs to stop. Like last month, or whenever the inauguration was, it's unnecessary. People are looking at the City of Chester and saying, wow, that's how they do things down there? Come on now, we have so many bigger fish to fry in this city. We need schools for our children to attend, safe schools at that. We need the trash picked up in this city. I'm proud to say I'm from the City of Chester, born and raised here, a proud graduate of the Chester High School class of nineteen eighty-three. I left and came back, but I'm proud to be back and I will remain here until I take my last breath. It needs to stop. Clean up all this trash. The blight in this city is unnerving. It really is. I know that the I-95 Curlin Street arm ramp, it's probably a state-run thoroughfare. Use the folks that are assigned to, what is it, community service, to pick that trash up. That is so disheartening when you have people visiting this city and they go to get on the bridge or the arm ramp and they're surrounded by trash. You don't see that in Chi-Chester. You don't see that anywhere else in Delaware County, I would bet a dime to a nickel, other than right here. And again, I don't care about anybody's personal dislike or whatever. At the end of the day, it's all about decency and decorum. We need to get some. Thank you.
Counsel, any comments?
Yes, I'd like to say I agree with the sentiment of the residents in the room, that there does need to be unity and anybody's personal feelings about anybody else should be discarded, because that keeps us from operating in the manner that we should. All I wanna do is help serve here in the City of Chester. I moved and I came back, and I came back to serve, and I'm always interested in what our constituents want and need. To come into a hostile work environment is not what I signed up to do, but I'm not going anywhere. I'm gonna stay here, I'm gonna continue to fight and uphold the standards in which I was voted for. Leadership, strong leadership, it starts at the head and it trickles down, but it's hard to work with someone who really doesn't wanna work with you or dictate to you what should or should not be done. And I'm gonna be always open and transparent about the way that I feel and the things that I see, whether someone likes it or not. I'm here to serve. I'm here to serve, and that is what I continue, that's what I will continue to do.
Sometimes the truth ain't pretty. And sometimes you may not like the truth, and you may not agree with what is happening or what's going on. But when I ran for office, I told you, I promised to be open, honest, and transparent, and that's exactly what I'm gonna do. Whether you like it, they like it, or anybody else like it, because that's what I signed up for. I signed up to let you guys know what exactly is going on. And I don't have a problem standing here, standing in the community or on Facebook, wherever, letting you know my true thoughts, my true feelings, and the truth of what is happening here in City Hall and what is happening here with people in this administration. And sometimes you may not like it, but you ain't always gonna like the truth, and the truth ain't always gonna be pretty. But I'm gonna be open and honest. I'm gonna let you know what's really going on. And I stand by everything that I've said. I stand by my actions and whatever I do, trust me. I, I don't, I'm always gonna stand up and I'm gonna fight for what is right. And if I think something is wrong, I'm gonna speak out about it, and I'm gonna be loud and I'm gonna be clear about it, whether you like it or not. And some, and like you said, some of y'all voted for me, and I appreciate your vote, but like, when I campaigned, I told you, I was gonna be open, honest, and transparent, and that's exactly what I'm gonna do, what I've been doing and I will continue to do. Thank you.
So again, good morning, everyone. To piggyback off of the different conversations, the discussions that are going on in this room, and to, in light of transparency, I come from, so the young lady says she doesn't know me, but she knows my family, you know, I don't, I come from a no-nonsense home. I come from, look somebody in the eye, say what you have to say, mean what you say, and go about your business. And that's majority of time done behind closed doors. So the things that you see from me, the quietness that you see, the, you know, the calmness, that's because that's the environment that I was raised in. For those of you who know Judge Davis, he's a, he's a very serious, straightforward man. And that's the way he raised me and my sister. I'm very straightforward with all my colleagues. I'm very straightforward with the community. All the conversations that we have, majority of time, I have them in private. I support a lot of people up here because they supported me. I'm, however, I'm not in the same position as some of my colleagues. The people you see up here before you are here for four years. They can, they can have different conversations, they can do different things. I'm appointed and I'm here for two. You will see me running for election in the next two years, campaigning and being in the community. So some things that aren't my fight, that have anything to do with me, and that's not pushing the city forward, I'm gonna mind my business and stay out of, because it's not doing anything productive for myself, not being anything productive for my family, and it's not productive for our community. So if it has anything, if it's not pushing my community forward, I'm gonna stay out of it, and that's something that y'all are gonna see from me. That doesn't, that doesn't mean I'm afraid to speak up. That doesn't mean that, you know, if I don't stand for something, I'm gonna fall for anything. That's not the case. It means that it has nothing to do with me, and it has nothing to do with pushing the City of Chester forward. So guess what? I'm gonna stay out of it. You know, I respect my colleagues, and guess what? They respect me, because I treat people with respect and I demand respect back. That's the way I conduct myself. But everything else, I leave it where it is. You know, I have conversations with everyone in City Hall. I'm very open. I say you can come see me, you can call me. People in the community that stop me, that I've never spoken to before in my life, I give my personal cellphone number to, because guess what? I'm a public servant. I'm gonna serve the people in my community. This, I'm raising my son here, and that's by choice. You know, like, this, this community is my home, this is what I love, so this is what I'm choosing to do. But everything else, I'm staying out of it, because it has nothing to do with pushing the City of Chester forward. The City of Chester is in bankruptcy, corruption, and everything else for years, because things like this have been happening. Since the thirties, the forties, before I was even thought of, this has been happening in the community. I don't want anything to do with that. I'm here to push the City of Chester forward. That's it. That's it. And I want, I want the help of everybody in this room that will support me and who won't support me. If you don't vote for me in two years, that's fine, but vote for somebody that's gonna come in here and push the City of Chester forward. That's it. That's all I ask for. That's all I have. My colleagues know where I stand with them. I have conversations with them behind closed doors. Ms. Tamika, her family, I have nothing but love and respect for them. Fred, working on his campaign, he's my friend, I have nothing but respect for him. Me and the mayor, Stefan Roots, we might not be friends, but guess what? He is my friend because he's my colleague, and I respect that man, because he's trying to do something, from my perspective, positive for the city. Do I support every decision that each one of these individuals make? No. Are they gonna support every decision that I make as a person? No. But guess what? We can work together as elected officials to push ourselves and our community forward. That's what you all elected us to do. So that's what we're going to do. Like you said, the personal problems, it has nothing to do with me. I leave here and I go home to my son, and I try to raise the next generation of a stand-up individual. That's it. So that's all I'm here to do, everybody. Listen, I love y'all, I love the City of Chester, I love my colleagues. They know where I stand, they know we can always have a conversation, and we'll go from there. So thank you.
Okay, I'll just close this out. I wanna talk about cleaning up the trash. I heard that from three people today. Cleaning up the trash, cleaning up the trash, cleaning up the trash. I want to reiterate something that was shared by our Chief of Staff when he gave his, was that the Quarterly Report, Chief?
Yes.
In that report, and I know there was a lot of numbers, a lot of graphs, but one of the things that he indicated was that our Public Works Department, in terms of weight, in terms of tonnage, in terms of amount of trash that they pick up in this city, it exceeds the amount of trash that's picked up by the trash man that comes up and down your alleys every week. Let me, let me say that again. Our Public Works Department picks up more trash than the trash man who picks up our household trash. So that should be an indication to all of you that we are picking up the trash, and we're still losing, because there's still more people dumping than we can pick up. I call it a game of whack-a-mole. If you know that game, where you have the mallet in your hand and the mole comes up and you hit it, and another one comes up over there, that's what happens. If we had a GPS and we could put it up on the screen, we could probably see our Public Works guys right now, picking up a pile of, you know, household goods, a couch, some tires, drywall, roofing materials. They put it on the trucks, they try to take it to Covanta. Sometimes they have to wait in line two hours in order to dump their load and get back on the street. And, and that's all I'm gonna say to that. But, you know, I just want people to know that we're losing the battle on picking up trash, but we're picking up trash. Blight. Someone brought up blight. Well, you just saw us approve an ord, a resolution today to demolish, I think, as many as a dozen properties. Wow, I wish we had twenty thousand, ten thousand, twenty thousand dollars to knock down every building that needs to come down in this city. We really have to count on the county, and that's why it's in the form of a resolution, and government takes a while. Sometimes it takes a while for us to cobble all that together, and we get the worst of the worst. As, if you saw the addresses, many of them are right next to each other. That kinda makes it a little more affordable, with the bulldozer can come and wipe out three or four on a block. You know, when we can only get a dozen at a time, maybe twice a year, you know, from funds from the county, that's literally the best that we can do. But we recognize that there's blight in this town. We recognize that there's buildings that have to come down. What we need you to do is to help us, and, and you do, for the most part, identifying, like, the worst of the worst, so that we can make them on the priority list. We do have emergency funds, but it's very limited in scope. So I, I did wanna touch on those things. So let's talk about the topic du jour, the proclamation, the plaque, and all the noise that has gone on in the city in the last week and a half, two weeks. I don't think there's been much of an argument, because arguments go both ways. You haven't heard a thing from me. So this is the time to hear from me. There's a couple of things that's been grossly missing from this topic. So, let's start from the top. The city issues, proclamations, it's the highest honor that we give any, any person from the City of Chester. So when you're giving honors like that, maybe, and I'll say maybe, there should be some consideration for who you're giving it to. Or you can just give it to anybody. You know, depends on how you wanna roll. I've worked under Mayor Kirkland as a city councilman. I've talked to John Linder. I've talked to Mayor Butler. I've talked to Mayor Pilegi. I've talked to other mayor friends in the county, whether from boroughs or from cities across the state, to kinda get some idea, how do you guys do proclamations? Because in the city here, it's always been the mayor's decision. It's been a final. It's been no compromise. It's been no, let's run it through council. But I wanted to be a little more diplomatic and get council's input. So while we're in the process of trying to figure out how we're gonna do proclamations, it was brought to my attention from Councilman Green, that he wanted to do a proclamation for a very deserving person in this, in this community, and that's Mr. Ralph Dorsey. A longtime personal friend, well over thirty years. No one more deserving. But when we decided to, hey, let's run it through the departments, let's see, let's make sure everything's cool here, and something popped up. Like, hmm. So when we talk about communications, keeping things in-house, as some of you have said, we communicated back to Councilman Green that, number one, because of my longstanding relationship with Ralph, or Rauf, as he's called by many, I would definitely wanna be the one to present that proclamation to him. And secondly, wow, something did come up. Something did come up. To my surprise, in my absence up in Harrisburg, trying to work on some PennDOT issues to get some businesses going down on two ninety-one, a plaque was given to Ralph Dorsey. Is it deserving? Of course it is. Sure, it's deserving. But I wanted to be there. So this is where I may have made a flaw. I called Ralph. I said, Ralph, I can't believe I was, I was put out there like that, that I refuse to give you a proclamation, because that's not the case. It wasn't a refusal. It should've been the start of a conversation between us here and, I'm gonna tell the rest of council, Councilman Gibson, Council Lady Gibson, I'm sorry, Councilman Davis, Council Lady West, that they may not have known of the correspondence I had with Councilman Green when they went forward with the, with their award. I'm not sure if they did or not. But it was, it was pretty direct and, you know, as said by some of you out here, you know, as politicians, I guess one of the arts of, of politics is compromise, is decorum, is negotiations. And there wasn't any here. You know, kind of expected it, that it would be, but, but there wasn't. You know, somebody got upset that, uh, someone just wanted to move forward with it, and it happened. He got the award, that could've been the end of it. But I just wanted Ralph to know that, from what was said in that council meeting, that it wasn't me that didn't want him to have a proclamation. It was just a process that we were going through. Maybe we'll delay it for a little while. So that is what happened there. Ralph and I are cool. We're still cool. There's some talk that I told him to give the plaque back. To that, I apologize. I apologize to Ralph, I apologize to you guys who gave the plaque. It, it, it wasn't, what the intent of that was, was that, you know, because of the respect I have for Ralph, I like, I want you to get the city's highest honor with my name on it. I want you to have a proclamation from the city. Let's, let's have a do-over. Let's just have a do-over. It wasn't out of disrespect. It was just, I want you to have the highest honor from the city. I don't even feel right giving a proclamation now. I mean, I don't, I don't know what to do. I, the, the honor has already been given by the portion of the city, and maybe we should've just left it all alone. So to the community that has had to go through, you know, all this stuff, all this talk, it hasn't been a two-way conversation, it hasn't been an argument. I've pretty much stayed silent. But I just want everybody to know that we're really looking forward to, how did someone put it? People are looking at Chester. You know, Chester has had a lot of stuff going on here over the years. We don't have to look any further than just a couple of years ago. Ghost employees, phishing scams, Chester Housing Authority and bad contracts. You know, we, we really have to imagine how people outside the city are looking at us right now. I'm sorry for maybe being a little more protective of the city right now, but as mayor, I really feel it's, it's the responsible thing to do. You guys voted for change. Eighty percent of you who voted, voted for me, change, you know? To go back to the way we've always done it, I just don't feel that, to go back to the way we've always done it. To the point that there are a lot of people in this city who have arrest records, whether it's justified or not. If you've served your time, you're definitely deserving. I work with workforce development, I've taken this on in the city, and I sit with fair-chance employers, these are employers who hire people who have records. And even they tell me that if you're a convicted burglar, I'm not going to put you in a job where you're handling money. Yeah, you can work a forklift, or cut grass, or fix a car, but, you know, you have to have some standards somewhere. I'm trying to set high standards for the city. I apologize for all the stuff that have occurred for me just being me. I take it. If you find me wrong, check me. But by the same token, we can sit down and talk about these things before it becomes public and out of hand, and, I mean, even today, I'm probably saying some things that aren't helping my cause. And for the most part, it's, it's just the way that we do government. Did you have something to say, Ms. Sams? No, that's okay.
Yeah, I did.
Thank you. You've, you've made your comments. I mean, you're being very, that's okay, Ms. Sams, I wasn't really, I was, I was a rhetorical. So just thank you, guys, bear with us, we've been at this for five months, okay? We, we require a lot of grace. I'm a new mayor, we have new council, we just have a new, we're bringing on new employees. I'm looking in the room right now, new, new, new. New positions, new responsibilities, new. Just bear with us, people. We all love the city. You guys have expressed that you want us to do better. As mayor and council, we're going to do better. To Ralph, my longtime biddy buddy, Ralph looks at me and he calls me legend. Why? Because he knows, when he was a youngster watching me in Biddy League, I was the guy who was the leading scorer in the league, national champ, All-American, all that kind of stuff. Like, he knows when he has the summer programs, that he calls me to speak to the kids. I don't want nothing to come between me and Ralph. This has been a touch, a touchy time for us. I value friendships way over politics. So let's put this behind us, let's move on. I apologize to council, and I apologize to Ralph. Let's move on. Meeting adjourned.[1794.80][1794.80]